State of vacation for you?
State of mind.
Actually, I have two states called Kentucky and Tennessee.
Oh.
Kind of starting very early in the morning. So, it's probably at 6:30. We can't recall it.
Yeah, it's a bit of a drive down to Tennessee and Kentucky.
You're not leaving tonight, are you?
I'm leaving very early in the morning, but I'm not driving though either. I'm planning on. So, did we get word that Tanya was or was not going to be?
She was not going to be here. She said if some miracle happened, basically, she would come late, but probably wouldn't be here because she had to work.
Okay. So, I'd like to call this meeting to a word. This is a village council special meeting workshop addressing the master plan and the review of the master plan on this date, April 8th, at 6:30 p.m. Rice, Kirkland. You can all say together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bryce, with the absent with notice.
Yep.
Botsu?
Here.
Ashman?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
Roslin.
Robinson?
Here.
Skornica?
Here.
We have a call.
We have a fairly simple agenda in front of us. Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support. We have a motion by Hayden, support by Robinson?
Yes, sir.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item on our agenda is public comments, there being no public present. Unless Liz or anybody else want to talk? Okay? Good. I guess we're going to move right into new business. And the new business really is technically old business, is continuation from our previous workshop, but it's the review and comment on the village council, of the village council and draft master plan submitted for approval by the Ortonville Planning Commission on February 5th, 2019. So, I believe the last place we left off, correct me if I'm wrong, was that page 77?
Page 76.
Is 76 at the top?
Halfway through 76.
Opportunities for approval.
All right.
And if I may, just I do have a couple of answers from the last meeting you asked me to talk about. Number one, I think I sent a voice or an email out on one of these, the DNR trout stream trail.
Yep.
Yep, you can kayak through there and you can actually even take stuff like if a tree's falling across the river or the creek, as long as the property owner asks you to cut that out or whatever you can, as long as you don't disturb the.
Gives permission to.
Yep, but you've got to have permission from the property owner to do it.
Right, that's how I understood it.
You can't pick anything up out of the river other than trash.
Trash, right.
And then the other thing right above that, I talked to McKenna about this flexible zoning mechanism. And basically their, so that was kind of a holdover. Their suggestion was eliminate it, just eliminate the whole thing.
I'm trying to recall what that was.
Which page was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's page 64, right above the trout stream question, you know, access to Duck Creek and Cruse Creek.
Yeah.
But it's the one that says provide flexible zoning mechanisms to encourage the reuse.
Oh.
Says that we have enough other things in there that that's confusing. They suggested eliminating it.
What number was that?
Number three.
Number three.
Page 64.
Yeah, so we did strike that, but we also said we needed more information.
Yeah. Okay, so we're just going to delete it now?
It is, okay.
Okay.
So, now I'll be quiet and watch you start it then.
Page 75.
76.
All right, so we're at 76, the top rate margin at opportunities going through there, M-15.
You know, they're referencing the M-15 access management plan. Where is that? There's such a plan that exists titled that?
Yeah, and it's from 2006.
That's when it was done?
So, it's an old, it's an old access management plan.
How often is that supposed to be reviewed or?
It's MDOT's, MDOT's.
Oh, it's MDOT's thing and it was 2006.
It's not ours, it's.
Okay. We don't coordinate it with them or anything like that?
There is no current one then?
No, not to this in my knowledge. I could not find anything other than that.
Okay, moving down to the next paragraph, Granger South Street, M-15 area. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on that?
We've kind of touched already on some of that. We've done that.
I think those are just a summary of what is in the MDOT recommendation, so I don't think that's anything.
These are just recommendations, yeah.
Yeah, those are, that's just a summary of the MDOT recommendations, I believe.
I got the mill and M-15 area, again, that's additional, it's the same.
Just one second.
Consider construction right near the lane in this area.
One second, Dan. Where it says on preserving a potential historic building, we don't know the answer to that, either it is or it isn't. I mean, we have that, I mean, a potential historic building, wouldn't we know if it was historic or not?
Do we?
The A and W, I think it might just not have historical status as of yet.
Do they do, is that done by a year?
I'm not really sure.
I'm not sure either.
I guess I'm just, you know, when it said a potential historic, either it is or it isn't, or it's just a matter of having it, you know, planted or something.
Not yet, it could be, not to be said, not yet.
But a potential.
Yeah, potential, yeah.
I mean, is it just because in one more year it'll be, you know, like an antique, you know, 25 years or whatever it is, I don't know, but I mean, is that the word?
Been around longer than 25 years.
Well, whatever, I mean, you know, I'm just saying, whatever that definition is, is that what we're?
So, do you want to put a period after A and W and just cross off that potential historic building?
Yeah, I think the whole.
What about a possible?
I like, I like the idea that it's bringing out that it's, you know, the history of it, I just don't know if I like the word potential, because to me, it's like either it is it.
You could say future historic building.
But do we know?
Potential might just mean that it's a candidate to be a historic.
I guess I just went up like, what's the back?
The thing is, there's historic spots that aren't necessarily because of age, but because of, you know, the type of.
The driving, right.
Things like that.
Right.
You know, that's kind of like a, it's kind of unique because you don't really have those types of.
Who's going to define that? I mean, who's defining potential?
I think Liz is on her way to find that out right now.
Who's going to define potential, I guess, it's like, who's?
Well, since these are MDOT's recommendations, you know, I don't know if I've messed too much with the wording in there.
But are they the ones that are going to be the ones that would decide if A and W is a historic?
A lot of times, you know, buildings are at least 100 years old, but, you know.
But it is a landmark, right?
Yeah, definitely landmark. So, maybe not historic, but definitely a landmark.
Because it's a landmark in our community, I can see that that would be potential for historic relevance, but I mean, I don't know. Like you said, this is, from what I can tell, it's taken out of the MDOT recommendation, so I don't know if we really should change wording if it's part of the MDOT recommendations, if that's what they said.
Whatever you guys want.
I believe it as is.
I think we like landmark.
I think just leave it as is, it's fine. I think it's a state's approval.
We might have to wait another 50 years before it becomes a historic site.
If we get.
Always be a historic today. So, what do you want?
Nothing else is a landmark, for sure. It's a landmark and that's something that we know on, we know it's my.
You know, as I've said before, I think unless there's a significant reason to change it, I would probably prefer to stick to the existing wording where possible, just so that there's fewer edits that they have to make.
Well, I'm not looking at the fewer edits, I'm just looking for clarity, you know.
Yeah, I don't see.
They're going to be editing a lot of this anyway, so that's not it, but I was just looking at.
No, I'm.
I'm just looking at clarification, that's all.
Okay, I'm clear as mud down here.
So, so far, where you have a consensus, just to leave it, but with a, just a.
Just put a little question mark on it.
Question.
If anybody could define it better, but.
I guess it makes sense, if you're going to call it historic building, is it, you know, do we need to put historic in there this go around or maybe another 20 years from now? You know, that's, I guess that's the Collins point.
Well, maybe by the next time this comes around, MDOT will have some updates to their plan. That'll help you.
Yeah, I just don't know who makes that decision to decide historic or not, so that's where I was just trying to get more information.
Okay, considering, then we're down to the, moving down to the mill and 15 area, consider the construction right internally in the area, optimize traffic signals, local and collector routes.
I guess we should name it.
So, which, where does the state stop and start on this? Is that where the green is at? So, who, who wrote the maroon titled paragraphs? Is that also the state?
I think, no, I think those are new or separate, because they start again with the kind of maroon color header. So, I think everything under their first maroon color header is the M-15, MDOT stuff, and then the next two are separate from that. Sort of the.
Yeah, because we took some stuff out of the green area when you, when the planning commission went through, because they were completed, stuff were done, you know, so I think they had a right turn lane or something from Grange Hall onto M-50, and then that was done.
Yeah, so consider those last two paragraphs as separate from the MDOT recommendations.
Is there a bit of, non-motorized travel opportunities?
The arterials, they had personal local and collector roads, that last sentence ends pedestrian, and to alleviate congestion on the arterials of the village.
In the village?
In the village. Arterials are contained within.
Within should be within the village.
So, we want to make within the village?
Strike throughout.
Okay. Catch that, Bill?
I know.
Under local and collector roads, the last sentence should be, and to alleviate congestion on the arterials within the village. The next one, just should be for local residents.
Yeah. Say it again, Larry.
The end of the next section, it should be, and raise the quality of life for local residents, as with an S in the end. There's obviously more than one resident.
And if you're sticking within the words within, then from that previous paragraph, why wouldn't we strike throughout and just put within the village on that first sentence? If you're changing that, just.
Well, I think the arterials lie within the village. They're making recommendations throughout the village, meaning throughout the entire area.
There is a planning commission, right? Because this is not the state's, right? This document.
These are, yeah, and I think these are things that may have carried over from past ones, I'm not sure, because there was a lot of content that carried, we reviewed all of it. But as you can see, the process of trying to review like a 90-page document and these things here and there.
That's a world of non-motorized travel opportunities paragraph, guys, everybody? Council? Next one is, we're doing to.
Complete streets. This section is new and was an addition because in order to get certain types of ransom funding from the state related to complete streets, you have to have a complete street section, and I had thought that we had covered that in our previous master plan, but I, we didn't have it explicitly in there, so now this is more of an explicit statement around complete streets, just for some background information.
Creation and maintenance of facilities that effectively accommodate non-motorized travel. What are we talking about? Building or having, promoting bike shops downtown, or what are we talking about there?
No, complete streets is a concept of designing your streets with more than just out of the built up.
I get that, but I was just talking about the last sentence where it says, or the first sentence where it comes. The second sentence, the creation and maintenance of facilities that effectively accommodate non-motorized travel. Are we talking about promoting bike shops?
Not bike shops, no, it's more like sidewalks, bike paths, you know, that sort of thing.
When it says facilities, suggests to me buildings more than infrastructure, roads or something, but that's all right.
Yeah, I'm wondering if infrastructure might be a better word to use there.
That's right, you say that there. Complete streets.
I guess they use infrastructure the very next paragraph right up front.
So, I think we talked about this in the previous, I don't know which meeting it was, but certainly it would be nice to have a bike lane strip there, but certainly our streets aren't wide enough to accommodate that, and even to suggest that we would have something and the road would only, I think, be more risky and.
Yeah, certain streets you'd be able to do it like we did on Cedar over there, and but like what you do on like Schoolhouse for an example, you just more or less paint like a bike thing in the middle of the road to indicate that you may be sharing the roads with bikes and that, and people walking or whatever, so they realize you're not going to widen every road to have a bike path on it, you know.
And that doesn't need to be done on streets like Mill Street, any street that has a sidewalk?
Ah, it depends on if you wanted to do like on Mill Street, if it was wide enough and you wanted to accommodate a bike path or something on there, you would. I don't see where you would have the, to be honest with you, I don't see where you'd have the room unless you eliminated a lot of parking.
Yeah, I think the bike lanes are probably, if we had those, would probably be more likely along, say, Oakwood or Granger, you know, those sorts of areas.
It's hard to start it and then you have to stop it and start it maybe in another section. It's like. Edward and Varsity may be a good candidate for it too, you know?
Yep.
Because if you, if you widened Edward, there's enough room there because you've got the school over there, so putting a bike lane in there and then when they redid the road and widened it would be probably good.
Are most bicyclists using the sidewalk and riding, or are they riding on their own?
No, technically the sidewalk's illegal.
Well, as we hit, yeah, so where are they?
Technically, they're supposed to share the light with traffic.
Yes.
Which is a horrible idea on M-15.
I mean, right now, near, I was pulling into McDonald's one day and backed up near Capella's, and some guy came lickety-too on a bicycle, hit the front of my car, actually went right over the hood. Police happened to be sitting right there, of course, LaPierre Police. I'm sitting there going, oh, this is great, mayor's going to get. And they said, duff, he's got no business behind, he's supposed to be out on the road, he's not supposed to be on the sidewalk, so it's his fault, not yours, so.
They're also supposed to obey the traffic sign.
Yeah, oh, no, you're right there.
Coming to a stop sign, they just want to fly.
Yep, they sign up, no bikes on a sidewalk, go to M-15.
No kidding. I mean, everybody have somebody signed anywhere? But no, that's just, the whole idea behind complete streets is to try to increase the use of bikes and walking and increase awareness of pedestrian and bike and vehicle.
Yeah, just to better support non-motorized traffic.
All right, so we're finished with the mobility plan?
Yep.
And then we're moving on to implementation.
This is where we get down some real new areas.
So, we go to, does everybody agree on the statement in front there?
Well, the last page was a map, right?
Right.
Yep. Okay, I want to, I noticed this from before, a lot of the maps, the majority of them, I think almost all of them so far, need to have the wildlife preservation park listed in here. Yeah, it's not listed in here, I mean, it spells out other things, you know, creeks and all this other stuff.
Yeah, but this doesn't show any of our other parks either. We've got several parks.
This is a walkway.
But I'm just saying, in general, I noticed that, you know, I saw a map and I remember.
And I thought that they did have those on the other ones. At least they had a bar.
Just, anybody else?
I mean, that's not the same map we're just looking at.
There's different maps. Yeah, I mean, different maps are different things. The ones where they did have like that, I think they've got the parks in.
Well, like this one, it says Ortonville Village Park, it's not the Wildlife Preservation Park, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Wow.
You know, so it's. Have you seen Garry Park, Sherman Park, Ortonville Paul Park?
That was ready for the historic preservation.
So, that's, that's a good point, since it is now called the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, we should probably update that.
We'll make sure.
Yeah, we'll go through all the maps, like recreational.
So, where it says village park, it should say wildlife preservation park.
Yeah.
We have to go through all the maps.
Yeah. I mean, if we're calling them out, we should call them up quickly.
Yeah.
Especially on 50 acres.
Yeah.
We should name them appropriately, I agree.
Yeah.
All right, so we, so we're good with that. We're on to implementation, the end of the first paragraph, are we, did we all do with the first paragraph reading?
Y is primarily responsible for implementation of each action or strategy, why are those capitalized? I thought it was, those aren't.
Yeah.
What's that again, I'm sorry?
Not a capitalization, you know.
Primarily responsible for implementing each action or strategy, why is each one of those letters capital? I thought, there's not a title, it's not a title of anything.
Yeah, it's kind of like, that is a little strange. Halfway through the sentence, they changed to a title format as opposed to a standard sentence format.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to just bring up the statement, where it says the plan in itself is a vision and provides goals and objectives. I think it should say period after that, but then it goes on to say, that should be considered in daily decision-making. Really, the decision-making is done monthly or when we talk, you know, to say that it's used every day.
Well, that's not necessarily true, Dan, because the thing is, is that we meet maybe once a month, but the villages operating every day.
Every day.
Or at least through the week, and as part of the operation of the village, you know, there might be cases, I'll give just a few examples, there's the administrative review process for, you know, site plans and things like that, and for those things, Bill would probably be referring to master plan and zoning and making those daily decisions that come before and related to anything that touches on the plan.
Right, but that's not done daily, I guess my point to that is, anything within the plan, which are, they're, it's a vision, right? Because it's in the plan, doesn't mean it's going to be executed every day.
We could strike out the daily and just leave it in decision-making.
Yeah, that's my point.
Okay, you just want to strike daily? We can do that. A bidding consensus?
I agree. You're good.
Moving on.
As long as Bill knows that he still has to come in and work every day.
Some days, some days are vacation time.
It doesn't say Bill is manager. Wheelchair.
12-hour days.
Wheelchair.
The rest of the section is easy, easy to bring it on. All right, so summary of recommendations. Page 82. We have four sections there, the planning and zoning, civic improvements, circulation improvements, and economic developments. We're doing each one of it.
When it, you know, it's like the first, the planning and zoning where it says, recommendation of this plan must occur at regular intervals to ensure the overall vision. Can, should we be more specific, define regular intervals? You know, I mean, do we want to put in there, I mean, what's a regular interval? You know, should we define that?
You're like, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I know that at one point we said there was something about plan needs to be reviewed every five years or sooner.
Well, right.
As conditions warrant, and I think that's, the regular intervals is we know at least every five years. If something significant happens that significantly changes the possibilities.
But, I mean, looking at every five years, we should, this should be, we're looking at this daily, that's part of our decision-making, so we're not looking at it for five years?
Well, the master plan must be updated.
Yes.
At least every five years.
Yes.
If something significant happens to change things in here, we should update it sooner.
Agree, but I'm talking about when it's saying about the implementation recommendations, continuous evaluation recommendations must occur at regular intervals. I mean, what's our continuous evaluation? I mean, the need for it, for what we're required to do as a municipality is one thing, I understand the five years.
Yeah.
But when we're seeing continuous evaluation of this plan at regular intervals, should we define this more specifically?
I would, since this is summer, I don't know if that is detailed, if that has more detail later on. We could put a note to check back with that, and if it's not specified later on in the details, we could probably come back and try to update that, what do you think?
I, I.
Because if it's just a summer, I don't know if we need to, if we get too detailed in the summary, then.
Well, yeah, I mean, so you don't know, you don't recall if it's in here or elsewhere.
I believe it is, but I think that that would be something that we could put a check back with.
We can check that.
Are we good with page 82? So, we're on to page 84, are we with page 82? So, we're on to page 84. This, to me, the timing of this does not consider our budgets or, and or, I mean, monies to take care of things within the time that whomever decided to, you know, how quick we're going to work on this. I mean, there's no way we have money to accommodate these within the one to three years, right? And all these plans, so to me, if this is just, it would be nice to be done, if you know, but not necessarily can, I mean, we just don't have the funds to do it.
When we put this.
And we're not going to ask the taxpayers for more money to do it.
I will say this, this is partly, we did have that joint session, I think, I don't remember if you were able to make that session, but we did have the joint session where the council and the planning commission sat down, kind of went through these and rated the priorities and such, and the timing and such.
So, it's a wish list more than budget tier and support?
Yeah, and I think that in part what we do is we take a look at these projects, hey, this is our list of projects. Yeah, and I think that in part, what we do is, we take a look at these projects, hey, this is our, our list of projects, and based upon the money and the funding that's available, that's your capital improvement plan. We take this wish list, and as we can fit components from this wish list into the capital improvement plan, that's how we, we relate this wish list into the hard concrete. What we can do is by picking pieces out of here and finding room for them in the capital improvement plan. Am I correct with that assumption, Bill, or that assessment?
Yeah, I kinda.
Yeah.
It's just my, my, my reality is, and it's kinda similar, it's kinda similar to what Dan was saying, it's not only financial, but it's.
Yeah.
It's physical resources, I mean, yeah, it's nice to have a lot of these things listed, but the chances of me getting to all these things in the next year.
Yeah, they're not gonna happen. But if we can, if we can, as we, as time and resources and money permits, then we can take a look through these and see which ones we can stick in and see if we can get them done.
Can we just put recommended timeframe, or?
Well, that's what it is, it's not, you're not etched in stone here, because it's.
Yeah, I recall the meeting, it was like something we had to put it in a slot.
Right.
Whether that made sense or not, we, it was slotted, so.
It's just kinda a way to prioritize what's important and what should be done first. You know, if it says within a year, then okay, that probably should be done sooner than something that says, oh, it can be one to three years out. So that's kinda like, it's just a way of helping to prioritize. It may not be until five to seven years, or who knows? But it was just kind of a way to try to sort these in a priority level, so that, you know, you can go down the list and.
So this is the first, oh, I'm on page eighty-four, is everybody doing page eighty-three?
Yeah.
Two of us, you're.
Yeah.
I was just reading the very first one, so in my eleven-plus years, I've never, ever, when a plan, or a master plan comes out, we've never gone back and revised zoning ordinances to be consistent with that master plan.
We absolutely did, the last, the last master plan, we certainly did.
Our ordinances are so overcome.
No, our zoning ordinances, zoning ordinances.
The zoning ordinances.
Not the, not the general ordinances, but the zoning ordinances, we went and we, we did a complete revision of the zoning ordinances right after.
So how would, how would the zoning ordinance change based off of what's here today, then?
I think that because of the changes we made last time, there's not gonna be a lot of changes in our zoning ordinances. I think one of the things is that they may get a little bit more formally form-based as opposed to use-based. Because we started in that direction the last time around, but we might need to make some adjustments to get that more in alignment with the form-based type zoning as opposed to a use-based zoning.
Form-based?
Yes, meaning that it's not as important what they're using the building for, it's more important how the building looks and fits in with the rest of the surrounding buildings.
And I'm sorry, but I thought within this, if that's what it means, then there is a, is there a guide within the master plan of what people's buildings are supposed to look like now? I know you took snapshots within other, with other, at other, but.
Yeah, a lot of this, this existing use plan and the future zoning and use, future use plan and stuff, that's what is going to fit into any changes to the zoning ordinances. Is if there's anything that has changed in that existing use and future land use, that needs to be incorporated in the zoning to accommodate that, that's what we would make adjustments.
Great, we wouldn't, you're not suggesting that we force as property owner to change the look in front of the building, huh?
Well, no, not at all, anything that's already here is already.
Grandfathered.
Here, it's gonna be grandfathered, yeah.
So new buildings.
It's basically, if there's change of ownership, or let's say somebody says, hey, I wanna make an improvement on the front of my building, then it might fit into the new zoning thing. Okay, because you're making a change, now we say, okay, your existing building was grandfathered, now you wanna do a facelift on it, okay, now you gotta comply to the new zoning regulations.
So do we have a new stuff?
It should have to be defined, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So do we have anything tagged on the school that we just, that they recently sold in the village?
Yeah, that was master plan as, or what we had said here is master plan that for M-15 commercial use.
Yeah, M-15 corridor.
I thought it was originally stated that there was gonna be more of a, a community center-based type.
That's what you gotta have, you gotta have that commercial in order to get it in there. You talked about having a restaurant and a, you know, and a community center type thing in there.
Recreational.
And now that it's no longer a public building, and that would fall into commercial range, so you'd have to zone it as, you know.
Well, it just has to be, it just has to be zoned in the type of the zoning that allows those uses. There may be more than one zoning that it might allow, cause we have downtown, we've got gateway, and we've got M-15 corridor zones, and they all allow business types of activities. The specifics around the activities varies a little bit from one to the next, but I mean, they all do allow business-type activities, so.
Has that particular building been rezoned yet?
No, he is, he's applying, I talked to him last Friday, and I just sent him the application for rezoning to the M-15 commercial corridor. So he's gonna fill the application out, turn it in.
Did he say what he, Captain, sorry, did he happen to say what he was doing?
Yeah, he said the same thing as what he's done all along, the car thing was simply a, they had done a, it was a thing with the police, were recovered vehicles. And for some reason, they had to tag them in a different location than what they sold them. So they tagged them down there, and the guy was supposed to have them out within two days, and they were all out Thursday or Friday last week, so they're no longer there. Plus any of the outside equipment that he had laying around, after we wrote him a letter, he removed all that too, so it's clean as a whistle down there right now. And he said his plans are still the same, they're resurfacing the basketball court, either, I can't, either this week or next week. So he's redoing that, he kept all the kitchen equipment in there and stuff, he says there is some more, he didn't wanna flood the whole market. He said the school brought a whole bunch of crap over there and kinda dumped it, it was a storage place, so there was more stuff in there than when he bought it, basically. You know, and there's like, sold a bunch of pianos, and the people paid for them, and then they decided they didn't want them, so they just left them there for him to sell again. So if you need a piano, go see.
Very well said.
Nah, I got a nice one.
I guess the same one that owns the.
Bedrock.
Bedrock, and then, doesn't he also own the skate park equipment?
Equipment, yeah, he owns it, but he sold it, and it should be gone within two weeks.
But we have a hard date, not just a two weeks, we have like that Friday, we have a hard date, it's gotta be gone by, not a generalized two weeks.
He told me as of last, he told me as of last Friday, if it wasn't gone, and wasn't done in two weeks, he'd remove it himself. So.
That's good to hear, thank you.
We'll see.
Alright, let's get back onto the planning and zoning action, so, you know, I'll let everybody talk as we go through this, so. Everybody speak up on anything that's of concern, so. The stormwater management program, where does that come from? I mean, we have a stormwater system, but how, I mean, are you gonna enforce it? Where is that within this plan, did I miss that stormwater management program?
I don't know if there's anything previously mentioned, but I do know this is just for.
It's a priority.
Infrastructure such as roads, in order to be able to keep your roads in good condition, it's really important to manage stormwater, because when you have standing water on your roads, they will deteriorate much more quickly.
But you, we're not talking about the drain, or the, the swamp or the wetlands behind ex-president Wayne Wills's house, are you?
We're, no, this is more, this is more.
Street?
Street related.
It's more, yeah, it's more related to like streets and drainage.
Like the one that they fixed on Mill Street, you know, it was really flooding over, and they had to.
Not private property owners.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not about, it's not gonna go into private property and say, oh, well, we're gonna drain your swamp.
Well, how would you enforce something like that, then? So if it's, if we own it, right, and if it's the streets, how would you enforce it upon ourselves? Are we just talking about the, the, you know, are guys cleaning out the drains? I mean, it says enforcement, enforce a stormwater management program. I mean, we're handling it now, aren't we?
Yeah, theoretically, I mean, if you had some, if you had somebody that was maybe inappropriately routing water or something for some reason, that could be a situation, but.
I suppose if it, if it relates to, for example, runoff from parking lots and things like that, maybe that would be how you enforce this, where he says, hey, I wanna, you know, do something with a parking lot. You would have to enforce the stormwater management when it comes to any site plan that would relate to that.
Or someone decides to go fill in the ditch in front of their property or something like that, and doesn't know what the ditch is for.
I think that before we get too far along in this, where it says on the columns, the priority timeframe, that's, that's just a wish list timeframe, right? So instead of timeframe, we're not, so, I mean, it seems to me like we oughta be worrying that, so, so that we're not leaving here thinking we're bound to do this in one to three years and everything that's here. So really, this was a, a wish list.
Probable timeframe.
Well, that's why I mentioned earlier, recommended.
Recommended timeframe.
Recommended timeframe? We could put suggested timeframe or recommended.
I mean, it's just, these are just wish lists. I think priority is always going to take, or should take, if importance, and some of the things I'm seeing are not that important, but again, they're in a slot. That kinda bothers me, it's like, well, it's in there, but it doesn't mean much.
Yeah.
So what are we recommending that, to say then?
Suggesting timeframe, or what did you?
Yeah.
I'd be good with that.
Recommend a suggested timeframe.
Which, which one, tell me.
I'd actually recommend that for us, if everybody's okay with that.
And then in one point seven, create architectural design standards for the commercial corridor area, and it's planning commission's responsibility, and then, but the one above it, where we're creating architectural design for the downtown, it has the planning commission, the DDA, the property owners, and the historical society. Should we, I propose that we, that we add DDA for one point seven.
Can.
We can't add that for the.
No, they're not, it's outside the district.
Oh, that's right, yep, yep.
Yeah, commercial corridor, that's.
Okay, what about, are we adding village council in there?
You could, you could add PO and VC if you want.
Yeah, I would suggest that we keep it the same as what we're doing for the downtown, as a commercial, the same people, the same entity should be involved.
I mean, ultimately, it's gotta go through VC anyways, and anyone, so it's, it should be written up more as a RASI chart, like whether it's responsible, support, I mean.
Yeah, but.
No, I don't know, I don't know if they can handle the RASI chart.
Yeah, but right now, this is looking pretty.
They had enough time just trying to get this formatted in the columns properly.
I was, I suggest adding the PO and VC then, to make it at least.
For, for which numbers then?
One, seven.
PO and VC?
Yeah, cause that coincides with the one above it.
Would be black, that's for just funding and.
Funding, where the funding is coming from. So what would you see them as, a key participant or contributor?
For one, seven?
Yes, because they, the project lead is gonna be planning commission on that one, but would they be a key participant or contributor? Or maybe ones, some of each?
So I'd put them down under V, I put PC, VC, PO in the three boxes right after.
That's what I did, yeah. I guess I didn't understand what you were asking there when it.
Well, it's the color coding, the color coding is, is it project lead or the key to participant or contributor?
Oh, I see, the shades of green, yes.
Yes.
Key participants.
Yeah.
So all of them are dark?
Well, no, they'd be the medium gray.
Gotta use some like this kind of color.
Yeah, like.
All the colors.
It would be helpful to have the key on the same page as what you're referencing. Maybe they can put the little key here on that page. I'm, I'm serious.
Seriously, huh? See, otherwise you wouldn't know what these colors mean without the having a table right here.
Yeah, so I recommend.
I think that's a good recommendation, that if there's room for it, certainly.
They can, they can.
Do you wanna run them out of the pages?
No, just like.
Yeah, why not, because it's gonna, it's gonna carry over.
There's enough corner space and all here, there's enough space.
I would, what I would suggest to do that would be to take, for, if we do it, and I don't, I think that's a good idea, cause it would certainly make it easier. But we have all the abbreviations up front here, what I would do is, I would take this section here, and I would have it, so it would be, instead have one, two, three across the bottom, like a, you know, three, have the three next to each other. Priority, timeframe, responsibility, and then that way, so you take these three that are stacked and do one, two, three like that, and leave out this stuff, and just have this stuff as.
Well, that's how, if that's the only way it would fit on that page, it would be going that way.
Or as our format.
Yeah, yeah, so that, so that'll fit horizontally about a page.
It's just.
Our, our row key, alright, next.
I think that would, that would make it fit.
Alright, so, we're at one, seven, are we good through? Why, I don't understand why we wouldn't have a historic district already created.
Well. You want the honest truth?
Okay.
Cause people don't like being told what to do with their property.
Sure, yeah, I was gonna say, that's the downside.
Yeah, but it's a district, we're not telling them what to do with the property, we're just designated, okay, you're in it.
But if you have an historic district, then you have, then the houses that are in the historic district have to conform to the historic standards or whatever for the district. Which is like, wait a minute, here's your list of color.
Clarkston downtown.
So I think that's.
But don't most people that, that have that know that that could be, I mean, obviously, if people already moved in, we don't have one yet, but, I mean, if I moved downtown Clarkston in a historic home, I'm gonna know that there's one, that I would have to.
You should've, you would know, but some, doesn't mean everybody's gonna know.
You're buying, oh, okay, I guess, I don't know.
I've heard that they had some issues down there, that's what I'm saying, years back, where somebody tried to paint their house a different color.
It's pretty colorful down there now, though, boy.
I think, I think that's why it has not been created yet, is because there's probably a lot of people saying, well, I don't know if we wanna have all those restrictions on it, on what you can do with your property and homes and stuff.
Yeah.
The next one, one, nine says, without updating recreation plan every five years, but yet it still says ongoing, so if we're gonna be.
It's ongoing because it's, it's actually just kicking off right now, right?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, that's why it was listed as ongoing, because we know that it's, it's just kicking off, and we're just starting that review right now.
Yeah. I think technically that's due January, January or February, is it?
February first.
February first of two thousand.
And I would, I would suggest that BT, Brandon Township, because I think that the planning commission would be, should be a key participant in that too.
For parks and recreation?
No.
No, you don't think so?
Parks and Recreation doesn't go to the planning commission, it goes to, goes to the village council and the township.
Do we agree that all of these, based on this color code, that those are all the project leads and the key participants, do we all agree that that's properly identified?
So, do we agree?
Do we agree that, based on this color coding, the primary, the, the project lead, the key participant, and the contributors are all identified correctly?
Well, I guess I gotta tell you, I know when it comes to revision of ordinances, certainly the planning commission works on those, but, but you can't do it without the support of village council. I don't understand why village council wouldn't be part of that as well, I do understand.
Number one.
Right, well, to Colin's point, we did, we were looking at the. Right, well, to Colleen's point, we did, we were looking at the projects more than the, the color code on groups responsible, but I understand the planning commission does work on the ordinances, but you can't do it without the approval of council, right? So why wouldn't village council be part of that process?
Well, the revision of the zoning ordinance is the responsibility of planning commission, once the ordinance is revised, it does come to council for approval, for final approval before it's implemented.
Right.
But it's similar to like the master plan, the planning commission puts the plan together and then it comes to council for review and approval, so it's a similar type process as, as the master plan, I think. Of course, we're going to be, maybe we should, yeah, see, this is the problem, the way they got this is you can't have like a split planning commission as, as primary and then village council as key participant or contributor or anything.
But we know that, we know that the planning commission is responsible for writing the ordinance, we also know that the village council's responsibility is reviewing them and approving them.
Yeah, but the council doesn't revise it.
I don't think, I don't know that we have to have, you know...
It's, it's not the council that revises, it's the planning commission that revises, the council approves or rejects.
That's what I said, yeah, so the planning commission revises it, sets up the ordinance, and then with the approval, so I still, I believe it should PC, PC VC for...
Second box, number 1?
Number 1, 1.1, under the village, it should say PC VC.
Okay.
Similar to what 1.2 says, right?
Similar to like 1.13, like the master plan?
Or 1.2?
Right.
If you want to be closer, 1.2 works, just.
Or 1.2?
First, we're adding that to 1.1 and 1.2?
It's already in 1.2.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, okay.
1.7, we already added it.
Anything else on that page?
Wouldn't, wouldn't the village council have final approval over the historic building design guidelines?
This just says create historic building design guidelines.
Right, so wouldn't, but wouldn't the village council also ultimately approve that? So similarly, for the same description of why we put...
But we're both in there, planning commission and village.
Well, village manager, planning commission, that's village manager. 1.5, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, it says village manager, doesn't it? Under 1.5, 1.5.
Yeah, those are guidelines, so we would create, I, I think that the intent there is to create guidelines that would be in alignment with the zoning ordinance on the master plan, you know, to help guide people in the, the...
But we're talking about the, the approving, what the architectural design should look like within downtown and nowhere, whether it's 1.5 or 1.6, doesn't show that the village council has any, any say over that.
Collaboration.
So it doesn't make sense that, I get it, the village manager's in there helping with the guidelines, but ultimately, again, under the approval process, the village council would have to approve those design standards. So that's why I suggested in 1.5, and I see it in 1.6, and even in 1, well, I see, I see that we did add it to 1.7, Colleen suggested that, but I think 1.5, 1.6, and 1.7 all should have village council oversight, not to say that we're doing it, but we need to approve it.
A key contributor?
Yeah.
So then we got to ask, McKenna, how do we, if we have like more than one village entity with different...
Different roles.
Responsibilities, how do we fit that into a single box?
That's what we're paying them to figure it out, right?
Yeah, because I think that that's the thing, is that, you know, we...
You're not, you're not defining the roles within multiple identities within each box already anyway, so why not just put all 3 in there and we know what each person's role might is now?
Well, I think that just for the sake of clarity, I think it would be better to have, say, this is the primary, this one's a key contributor, so we know which one's the lead on it. If we have like 3 different people on there, if we have...
Who's the lead, right?
Yeah, we have 3 different people in one block.
Darker is key, or is lead, and then the lighter is...
Yeah, but the way they got the column is village, and planning commission, village council is all, is, who is the lead between planning commission, village council, it's not clear because they're in the same one box with one color.
Yeah, they'll have to...
And I think that that needs to be somehow split up in a way to, to show which one's the lead, which one's contributing.
Great, thanks. Alright, so we got to do, we got to do some rework on that. So, but do you, do we agree that we need to, in 1.5, 6, and 7, all need, village council has a role in that process, right?
We'll filter up through the, eventually filter up through the zoning ordinance is correct, because if you're talking about...
Yeah, a lot of these things would be coming up into the zoning, like the guidelines and all that stuff would be related to the zoning, rezoning, I would think.
Because if you're going to enforce architectural standards, they have to be, have some kind of teeth in it or something, or people are just going to tell you, what, it's a recommendation, I choose not to take it.
Right, right, if you're suggested, yeah, right.
I suggest that you buy a dog license.
Right.
Oh, okay, no, I don't have it.
And that they're, they'll tell you if I don't, thanks for your suggestion, I'm...
So, yeah, I would be a little leery about putting the village council on all these as, you know, because I think the assumption would be that it drives up through, you know, the approval process, you know, I agree with putting on 1.1, but I think if you add too many of those on there, that it, you know, it's not going to, you know, it's going to have to go through the zoning process to get approved, and you guys sure as heck ain't going to have enough time to work on all this stuff, but you have enough time to approve it.
And I think that it's pretty clear that, you know, all of the bodies, the DDA and the planning commission, ultimately, the village council is the overall approving authority for all the activities.
We have a lot of documentation that says that already.
Yeah.
Right?
Now we can suggest if we write one in there? Right.
Where are we at now?
So we're, we're going to just add it to 1 and 1.5, and we're not going to add it for the 1.4, 1.5, and 1.6, is that what I've heard?
We're striking at 1.5 and 1.6, I thought you said to leave it in at 1.7, didn't you say?
Yeah, leave it in at 1.7 and 1.1, so 1.1 and 1.7, that's going to be in there?
But 1.7, VC is key, yeah, we need to get them to clarify.
Yeah, okay.
So that we can distinguish which one, when there's multiples listed on that first column, which one is the key and which one's the contributor. Yeah, or the project lead, I mean, yeah, because you only have one project.
We good, we good with that page?
Yeah.
Next.
Oh, by the way, just want to note, you notice the 1.13, I think this comes back to the plan must occur at regular intervals, 1.13 is where it explicitly states, review master plan every five years or sooner as necessary to address changing conditions, redevelopment opportunities, and the changing needs of the community, so that's where we kind of covered the regular intervals, that's what...
It's still the 5 years.
It's 5 years or sooner as conditions change, basically.
I mean, it's, it's unspecified, it's very junk, it's very broad, but anyway.
It leaves it open, basically, it's down, leave it open.
But I was just saying, I do recall that we had that more explicitly detailed further down, and that's where it was, it's right there.
Are we going to page 85 now?
Yes.
Wow, I think we leave 2.1 to trustee chair.
Oh, trash.
Unified trash pickup. Oh, unified, we're going to be in that.
Page 85, right?
Yeah.
Well, we have a lot of awareness on...
We'll get something that's workable, so, we'll, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. It says village manager on there, but it's obviously council's working on that.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to let you guys, I'll change that to VC, is that okay?
Well, wait, you can do that after the ordinance situation gets resolved.
See, I think they got 1.1 and 1.2, or 2.1 and 2.2 flopped around, you know? That should be VM, VC, and 2.1, and then VM and 2.2.
Just VM and 2.2, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and then I would, seriously, I would put, I would put VC up in the other one.
Correct.
VC and VM if you want.
Could you do it based on our direction?
Yeah.
So on 2.1, we're adding VC?
Yeah, as a quick side note, are they still offering that special pricing?
Pricing, VC.
It's already there, we're just striking VM.
Uh, which one, 2.2?
Yeah.
No, you're striking VC on 2.2.
I thought I saw something in the...
I thought we were going to change 2.1 to VC, VM.
Yeah, 2.1, VC, VM, right?
Okay, alright, guys, what are...
Hold on, 2.1, VC, VM.
Yes, okay.
2.2, VM.
VM.
Yes.
Okay, I get that one.
And health department also, yeah, makes sense.
We don't have a thumb in there on maintenance of septic systems, though, on how it goes, as far as...
It's all personal properties?
Yeah, not really.
No, no ordinances or anything like that.
It says you got to come pump, are they still offering that or give it a permit?
There's only one, one ordinance in the state that I could find where a local municipality did it, and that's a time of sale, and that's being challenged because it's state specific. Current state law says it's the county's job, they defer it to the county and the county doesn't want to take it on.
Interesting.
The only, and they do have, they do have under the new...
County probably wants us to be in it.
The engineered system, if you buy an, or when you put an engineered system in, the county, the county has a program now to check you to make sure that you're doing your engineered system, so we do have that, put it in.
Got a little money now.
They get a little money, so...
But, but where there is a failing system, something has to be done, and you should have an ordinance where we know there's a failing system, there should have something that says...
Well, we have fusion systems here in the village, is that being monitored or what?
We've talked about that.
How long we do? All we can do is, if somebody, you know, we don't go tromping around in people's backyards, we're not allowed to do that, if somebody calls and says, hey, there's sewage coming up in my neighbor's yard, then I call the health department down in Oakland County and say, hey, someone called and reported.
You don't ver, you don't verify, yeah, but sewage.
No, no, that's not, not my job.
No, you don't, you don't hear that.
They do copy us on letters to homeowners, by the way, the office.
So we've had a couple, we've got a couple houses and businesses that have been contacted to say, hey, you have a problem and you got like 10 days to correct it or work coming out and, and that's something.
So how are we going to promote care and maintenance of a septic system if we don't have anything to do?
Kind of like what we did the last time, is we did the, we did the 500 card, we did the 500 card.
We gave a $20 discount, well, we didn't give it, but...
We got like 10% of the houses in the village to pump there.
We could probably, should try to do more like at Creek Fest, to have an informational booth to get more information out to the community on septic systems and impact on our water.
So maybe we ought to put, promote awareness for proper care and maintenance of septic, because right now it says promote, so I think, I think we need to put awareness in there.
There you go.
Agree. 2.3, replace aging infrastructure as necessary, and the property owners, give me an example of when we...
That's us, that's sidewalks, that's...
Right, infrastructure, yep, but the, how would the property owners be involved with that?
They are listed as contributor.
Right? That gives, give me... Does the street closure, maybe?
No, they might, they, potentially, I mean, you could have, we've had, we've had a, we had a situation up in Lopier where the property owners wanted to, wanted their street redone, and were willing to pay a special assessment to do it, and then when we did the special assessment, they started balking, but then a business owner stepped up and kicked in like 20 grand, but...
I guess I'm just, I'm not really sure how that would...
So it's an input thing, like if you're doing sidewalks.
If you're talking about the businesses in the downtown, they definitely might be a contributor, when they talk about, hey, we're going to be redoing the sidewalks, they might have some suggestions or reviews and say, hey, you know, can you do something to like, I don't know.
Righten it up or something.
We don't have a BO, we don't have a business owner.
We don't, no, just property owners.
I like that one. What number are we on?
We're on number 2.4.
Oh, boy.
And I see that this is under village manager to do within one year.
I, I think, we need, this is one you need joint contrib, this is one that I'd like to see, you know, ever, well, this is M15 and mil and south.
Right.
So that is M.1. But, no, that is, that is us, so if you keep them under that, because...
Well, yeah, that is...
Talking about within one year, high priority, I don't, I don't see this happening within one year. I, this should be within 1 to 3 years, I mean, I don't, I don't see, are you going to do something within the, within this year, Bill, to...
We're going to arc something coming in, you know, like upper hills.
1 to 3 is good with me, huh? I'm good with 1 to 3.
I'm, I'm suggesting that the council, I don't want to say it's just me, I'm just for others to consider, right? I don't see it happening in one year at all.
I totally don't see it as a high priority.
No.
1 to 3?
So, we're going to change it to B and 1 to 3 for priority, is that what I heard?
The, the priorities were set, we, we finalized these when we had village council and the planning commission get together and reviewed all of these at that meeting.
But the council has the ability to change the priority.
Yeah, I mean...
Because they're the ones that control the purse strings.
What I'm just saying is that, yeah, okay, we can change the priority, but that, that priority was, was set after we all sat and we agreed at that one meeting, why are we changing it now, just because we decided differently suddenly?
We went through the whole thing, Larry, at that meeting, and there was no way we could go over each and every item, I don't think we really did, as we got into it, we, because I think it wasn't way...
We tried to step through, okay, anybody want to make any change here, no, that one looked okay, that one looked, we, I know we focused more on ones where there was concerns or differences of opinion, because what this priority came was when we sent this survey out to, of everybody, and we said, okay, give us your feedback, and then they ranked these based upon the feedback that we got back, so the A priorities meant, meant that the majority of people that responded back from the planning commission and council said, yeah, we think this would be an A priority, and if there were, I don't have the raw data in front of me to look at and see how many said A, how many said B, how many said C, but I mean, this is where these number, the priorities and stuff came up from, from that.
But this is now, and that's not really right, I mean, there's no way we're going to do this, so it's...
Well, I, I would say, which one is this?
2.4.
I would say change it to 1 to 3 years, I think it's important, I think it does, we need to have something more significant in downtown, but that, we're talking about signage and we're talking about, you know, just making it a little bit more visible, I think that's something doable in 1 to 3 years if we...
But priority?
Well, I mean, I think part of it is to try to make Ortonville look more attractive to draw people in, that's what the purpose of having those.
We need to put in our neighborhoods to do that.
It's very important, it doesn't take, I mean, it goes from import, most important to very important, priority, I mean, you know, for that.
Well, I mean, C is important still, and most of the C things are kind of like, well, I don't know.
I thought we were talking about changing that for A.
Yeah, but I mean, the priorities are most important, very important, important, so it'd be like high, medium, and low would be more...
So who's in favor?
So who's in favor of changing two point four from A to B priority within one to three years?
I.
All right.
Got a consensus. It's a B.
On that same lines, wouldn't the next one be also a B?
Yeah, why would we have an A, but then the, the priority's one to three?
Yep. So it's a B.
And you're gonna change the timeframe to, to one to three and two dot four?
Yes.
So we're through with five, right? You got that, Bill?
Yep, those are D.
We're good with two, six and two, seven?
I am.
We're moving on to eighty-six.
Okay, there's a couple here that I think ought to be whacked.
Very.
And that's the bandstand at the old mill. We had one person suggest that. And we're talking about putting a blacksmith shop down there at the old mill now with historic society paying for it and stuff.
So you wanna whack two dot twelve?
And then two eleven also, I can't ever see putting a gazebo here.
I don't think there's enough room there for it.
I don't think so either.
And that's the wind guard.
I think we just need to make sure that it's tidied up before we worry about a gazebo.
Native plant species guard. Hey, we have a wildlife preserve.
We do, we do. I'll give you that, Larry.
In the wildlife preserve. Can we whack those, can we whack those two, please?
I find interesting that one person suggested it and yet it made, it made it on the list. That's where I think that there's.
Yeah, and you know, actually, I'm okay with taking things that we know we're not gonna be doing off the list, because I think that when we have too many things on this, I think the next time.
Well, and there's one on the list, there's one that, I know that you guys wanted to add.
Yes, I was gonna say that.
You wanted me to research the wires.
Bearing list.
Yes.
So that would be.
Or eliminate, reduce brownouts and blackouts that we have so.
And it beautified the village.
Right.
So, so.
So many aspects.
It's gonna be a two point something if I add it to the.
So the, the first question on that, so.
But I think that should be a higher priority than a C.
Which, which?
Okay, so if we're, if we're gonna do, you know, what, you know, build the bandstand, you know, for two twelve, maybe we could add, instead, add, you know, add the underground wiring.
But that's a C.
Yeah, but you could change that though, to A and.
So the question is.
You wanted a B?
Said A or B or C?
Well, I, probably.
For, for, you're talking about overhead wires?
Yeah.
So in place of, on two eleven, we could add, you know.
I think I would probably go for B only because I know that that's probably gonna be something that is potentially expensive unless it's combined with other projects. And so rather than making an A priority, I would say it should be a B priority, and then as other projects and activities come, we can work at it.
Well, the only reason I say A right now and everything is because.
Yeah, they're all gonna take money.
Right, so money will play the role in any of this stuff. Right now, DTE is talking about making significant changes, and so maybe we can coordinate that.
They're gonna help, they're gonna make me happy.
So maybe that's a time that we, we introduce this at the same time.
For example, if we redo a sidewalk section, hey, we're gonna redo the sidewalks on the street. Hey, there's an opportunity to see what is it gonna take if we can bury the lines longer too.
Well, if we do, then we have to take up the sidewalk to bury the lines.
It's all horrible, yeah, drilled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They go right under.
So are we, we're striking one of these and replacing it with something?
Two eleven, two eleven, two eleven, two twelve.
And we're changing that to bury overhead lines, right?
Right.
And we're changing it to, from a C to an A.
Yes.
And we're talking about three plus years because.
Yeah, because.
We have an opportunity right now where we might be able to get DTE to help. Because it's gonna be phased in, right? You can't do it all at one time.
Maybe one to three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, to make their affairs, you know, we're gonna get them all.
And responsibles?
VC?
VM?
Right.
Well, VC also.
What are they gonna?
Well, we could.
I mean, seriously.
We're gonna pat you on the back and say, good job.
You're gonna give it to us in your management.
Is there other local government involved?
VM. And did we say we're striking the bandstand?
Yes.
No pun intended.
Funding. You know, on projects two point eight and two point thirteen, they're very similar. Maybe we can just combine that and shorten the whole thing a little bit. We've already struck two eleven and two twelve, but two point eight and two point thirteen. We've got kayak and canoeing.
We can, we can combine all.
Yeah, let's just, yes.
Yep, strike thirteen.
Because it's pretty much already.
Or you can strike both of them because.
You strike, I got thirteen.
Strike thirteen?
Thirteen, two point.
Two dot thirteen, yeah, because it's redone into two dot eight.
And, and can we, while we're talking about two dot eight, so it says, in the last, it's, uh, last sentence, it says, access to the above proposed parks. What does that mean?
Treants.
The above proposed parks. So, so we already said, we already said that.
So strike that from.
Because we already said, within the wildlife preservation park, we're not gonna have a dog park, we're not gonna be.
Right.
Down for gazebo's or anything.
We've been deleting those added lines, you know, on a lot of others.
I think the only realistic place for that would be by, um, Naren Park. There is a, it's a.
Right.
So should we strike the?
And there's room for.
To the above proposed parks?
To Naren Park.
Naren Park.
Should be Naren Park.
Just Naren Park.
To Naren Park?
Well, it's, it's got a gazebo there.
There's already bathroom there, and so that could be struck, because we don't, we already have one there.
Bathroom where?
Naren Park.
Naren Park.
Oh, we deliver it every May.
What?
We deliver it every May.
Just go, you know.
Well, we don't have to add it, it's already there.
So we're striking?
What are you striking?
Are we above proposed parks and adding Naren Park?
Yep.
Yeah. To Naren Park.
Yep.
Do we need to strike bathrooms? It already exists. They deliver it, I mean, it's there.
Well, that's, that's a temporary bathroom, that's.
Well, so you're talking about a permanent bathroom, like a cement walk-in fixture?
Running water.
With the porcelain?
I don't know. State parks, they have a lot of natural composting type things that are, would be a more permanent bathroom. Different things.
There might be grant opportunities for something like that.
Yeah.
We can do it.
All right.
Do we wanna keep, do we wanna keep the word add or consider?
Who are called?
Well, it, it wouldn't be a project if we're only considering. The project.
They're all the considerations, they're not, they're not.
That's, that's, this is where I was saying earlier, is that when we have the goals versus the objectives, you know, the specific projects and stuff. That's where it's like, one is more general statement and then these are the more specific concrete steps or projects that we would do to implement those objectives.
Well, the problem is, Larry, is the two, and, and this is where some of these have a problem, because two eleven and two twelve, one person. That's ridiculous.
Well, to be honest, I was not happy with, I thought that McCanna should have been able to do a better job of going through those and consolidating them to.
Isn't that what the planning commission communicated back to them though, Larry?
You know, at some point, we, we were getting, you know, at some point, you just gotta say, you know, we gotta move forward at some point. Because we kept going back and forth with them for a long time and, and we had finally said, you know what, we'll just, we gotta put something out there eventually, so let's get this.
Yeah, the way, the way they did it, when we, when we had that get-together, um, was, was just not well orchestrated whatsoever. You know, there was, um, you know, there was two, two of us from village, two of us from planning commission, maybe there was one other person. And, and there was a member there that was just, you know, oh, we, we want this, we want this, and it's like, we were supposed to, I thought, collaborate on what we wanted so that we could collectively say, oh, yeah, dog park there would be great, oh, yeah. But instead, there was a member in my party that was just taking the sticker, just doing it, and it was like, whoa, we, we didn't decide that. You decide, and it was like an off-it-like. It was like, you know, so.
McCann, after you said, hey, whatever you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I thought we were supposed to collaborate at that point, but.
Yeah, like you said, I was not impressed with how McCanna, McCanna managed the whole process. I was much happier the last time they could be, yeah, we would have looked like master plan.
Okay, so, we're, they're moving along.
Two fourteen?
One, four. I, I don't like this at all, but I'm gonna read it out loud, so. Provide landscaping, landscape planting and buffers of undisturbed vegetation along the edges of wetlands, right? And streams in the village to protect waterway quality and establish parks to preserve areas along both creeks as well as the woodlands on Mill Street.
What were your thoughts?
So because the woodlands on Mill Street is the wildlife preservation park, I'd propose that we strike two fourteen.
I, I, I agree.
Yeah.
I do too.
That whole thing is, um.
One more.
Yeah. Such a great.
What, one more?
Did you say strike?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we need one more, though.
Just strike, just strike.
All right, it's gone. It's gone. Moving on, next, moving on. It's gone.
We gotta keep going.
Well, two fifteen is the same.
You know, if we're deleting these, well, not yet, since, since we've deleted these particular four, that's gonna obviously take up our product under civic improvements. Are they gonna replace anything that didn't quite make the list?
No.
They won't. It's just gonna be, we've got two on there, we've got two.
This is, this is, they don't do not, now, this they.
Unless we wanna add here.
This they is the planning commission.
Okay.
So this goes back to them. What I'm gonna do is redline, we're gonna rip redline this, send it back to the planning commission. The planning commission will in turn say.
Okay.
So what, what are, were you talking about?
Well, two point one five, I'll just read it. Provide greenway connections between natural areas in and adjacent to the village through a combination of protection and restoration, including the proposed park areas along the creeks and the wooded area on Mill Street. I think the wooded area again is getting back to the, the preservation park. Yeah, this is saying, provide connections between though, it's not talking about touching that part, it's just saying, provide connections between those areas. But then again, we just struck two fourteen, which was talking about establishing some of those, so we struck two fourteen.
Why would you say in the wooded area though? That's, that minimally, we need to strike in the wooded area on Mill Street, which is the preservation park.
Well, like you said, it's just talking about a connection between, not talking about impacting that at all. It's just saying connection between, meaning how do I get from point A to point B? That's your connection between. It's not talking about doing anything at the endpoints, just the connection in between.
Where would that be? For example?
Good question. I'm not quite sure on this one, to be honest. I think that might be why it was a C and that's available.
That's the trusty buts you pointed, is I don't think it really, that it's necessary.
So whack it, and if we whack two fourteen already.
Might as well whack two fifteen as well. Okay, done. Moving on to page eighty-seven.
Just before we move on, that, I don't think you, we ever said in the answer as to the new one about bury overhead wires, the funding, where'd that?
I got, acrossed all three.
All three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because.
Yeah, I was thinking DDA in public for sure, I didn't know on private.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Because when you bury the lines, when you bury the lines, you're gonna have to pay to get them to the buildings. So, you know, you may have a special assessment district. But we're feared, uh.
At least we're fortunate because our buildings are so close to the lines.
Yeah.
They're not like a couple of feet.
Right.
You're talking less than fifty. So we had a contractor come into town and he's doing fifteen, twenty hookups versus when he came in my backyard to bury the line, and it's a lot cheaper.
Yep. Okay, so we're on project three, one. Create a business recruitment strategy to attract new business to locate downtown. I don't understand why it's not ongoing, technically it should be doing, that should be done now? And if it's not done, why are we, why isn't it done? So it says within one year. My gosh, we've been paying the DDA director how much money per year? You would think that strategy ever exists.
Yeah.
It, to be ongoing.
So why would it be ongoing?
So does change it ongoing?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's technically what Main Street is doing.
Yep.
Like this, we're all agreeing. Moving on.
Would three, three, two also be ongoing? Isn't that what we're trying to do?
Okay, yep.
Three point three is the same, is also an ongoing.
Ongoing, yep.
I agree. Three point four to me is ongoing also.
Yeah.
That, that always happens.
Is, uh, the village, what events does the village specifically sponsor?
Well, we've sponsored, uh, we've been co-sponsored with Christmas in the Village.
Okay.
We've been, you know, gosh.
Car shows.
September Fests and those are more like.
Halloween.
Okay, yeah.
You know, a whole bunch, and even when we're not paying out money, a lot of times it's in kind.
Fireworks, fireworks, we don't, we contribute to.
Yeah, but I mean, it's in kind contributions, because we, you know, our DPW.
And actually, it does say the lead, product lead on all these is DDA, so that makes sense.
Yep.
Now, I see this as being ongoing as well, though. Aren't we encouraged, aren't we doing that now? Three point five I'm talking about. Right, so we're, we're arranging activities for all ages, right?
Including children, so all ages, but including children.
We always must not forget the children.
But it's like including all ages and then include, can we strike including children?
Yeah, no kidding, yep.
Including all ages.
So, and it, it's gonna be ongoing as well, we use three, it's gonna be ongoing?
Um, I think it's, yeah, ongoing.
Yeah.
I like this next one.
Yeah, me too.
It's not just, not just in the downtown area, because there's people, I mean, I see people parking anywhere they want sometimes, I just. So I don't know that, I said, wouldn't we wanna say within the village? Why do we, why are we just specifying in downtown area? Do we wanna include within the village?
Sure. I like.
Do we agree? I don't.
Yep.
All right. So we're.
But then in the downtown area and?
We're, we're striking in the downtown area and we're gonna say within the village.
Okay.
You know, on that note, I've had people approach me about, especially, it happens a lot on South Street, but people parking their vehicles right alongside the road between the sidewalk and all that, and sometimes there, people are parking their vehicles on the sidewalk or their mirrors hanging out over, you know, and all that, and they, they have to move around or whatever. And I had one person approach me and say that they're really concerned with, uh, people parking on the sidewalks right there and somebody being able to abduct a child, you know, and that kind of thing, you know, unrecognized cars, you know, somebody pulling up.
We probably shouldn't let, you know, um, the, you know, Oakland County know, so when they, when they're driving around and they see a vehicle that's over the sidewalk or something to, you know.
We have to have an ordinance for that though, wouldn't we?
Oh, but I think that, isn't that just a standard that you can't, you can't be blocking a sidewalk, so.
The public rightfully.
Yeah, so I mean, if I wanna walk down the sidewalk and you've got your, your pickup truck blocking half the sidewalk, that's illegal and that should be.
It's a good plug.
Taken care of. So the, I think we just need to make a little phone call to say, hey, please be aware when you're driving around to take notice of that.
You know, I'm looking, I'm thinking about three dot six, about the creative apartment plan, and this is under the economic development section, which it does, is probably more specific towards downtown. If we're talking about the general village, then it would probably be more fall under circulation. So that's why I'm just wondering if we, if this, I mean, to me, it makes sense that the scope is downtown area because it's under economic development. I also think it makes sense that we should consider parking throughout the whole village, but I'm just wondering if that would be too, uh, the second bullet point under.
My, my own concern is like when we had large activities, you know, like September Fest and all that, I mean, people are parked. I mean, people are parked everywhere and it's like, don't.
That's why I think within the village, I think it covers.
Yeah.
All, all downtown, I don't know that we need.
I mean, it doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen, you know, on certain activities like that.
Well, how about if we say in the downtown and the rest of the village? So that it maintains that focus on the downtown, but also is inclusive of the rest of the village too.
That's redundant, the area, I think. Within the village is downtown, yeah.
I mean, we're only one square mile, but.
Yeah.
Well, within the village it is, I guess, if everybody's in consensus.
I like it. That's a check.
Yeah, check.
All right.
Create a facade program to fund building facade improvements to downtown buildings. Don't worry, I have. Planning commission, why would the planning commission?
It says within one year and ongoing. Planning commission is a, the light yellow is contributor. Which makes sense because that does kinda relate, if, if we are, uh, the planning commission is doing, uh, like style guidelines or architectural guidelines and stuff like that, they, that definitely would contribute towards the facade program, that would be a contribution towards that. So, it makes sense that planning commission is contributor.
But I think we can mark this ongoing, 'cause there has been facades.
It is, it says.
It says one year slash. And then ongoing.
So, how do we just strike within one year if it's already ongoing?
To maintain consistency.
Yeah, I, I agree. Next.
I thought we had said that when we did this review, we said we should just, if it's ongoing, it's ongoing.
No, that was a big argument about, oh, there's some parts within, you know, going, some parts not, so, so. All right. Three eight.
Yeah, we can, we can get art stores in here, art galleries or practice, I mean. Isn't that what that's saying?
Mm-hmm.
Why does it have that as well at the end of that, three dot nine?
It shouldn't.
It should just end after.
And then the next one should probably be zaunt two. Which one? Three ten.
So, why is, why is the village responsible for promoting eateries and coffee shops and not DDA? Isn't that what the DDA does? So, you have the village council responsible for that one, I'd be, it should be the DDA.
Okay, changed.
Good catch, Dan.
Good job.
Does the village council have a role in that or no?
Does the workshop?
No, do we have, are we, is the village council a key contributor?
Is the DDA gonna be the only, one and only, or is there other entities that are going?
They answered, they basically answered to us for approval, right?
But we established that, that, I mean, all of these items do come before.
That's what we were trying to say before.
But, yeah, but then I thought, DDA does promote.
That's.
Yeah, I really think that, I think that is more.
Yeah, just put DDA.
Yeah, I think DDA is more appropriate for it, for sure. Just, I'm just wondering if there was any other entities that would also contribute on that or not.
Were you suggesting striking three ten though? Yeah.
I was gonna say, I was gonna point out policy, how are you gonna force a property owner when they can't afford to make, I mean, barely paint their house, let alone doing a rehab on it?
I mean, we currently try to.
We can kinda recap on our own.
Absolutely.
Strike?
All right, so we're striking.
Three eleven.
Three, three eight. Um, explore and promote the idea of including local business and artist-related endeavors for a unique local entity. How, how is it really any different than we're still promoting local business and related when it's, when we're talking about the three, you know, the three one and the three two?
It's very close to the one.
Yeah, I mean, we're using artists compared to businesses, I mean, um, can we strike three eight? Because it's kind of captured the three one? Do we wanna be specific about seeing artists?
I think the purpose on three eight is, uh, you know, three one, three two are talking about attracting businesses in general.
I think three four.
Three eight is more about, uh, you know, trying to incorporate a unique character into the types of businesses.
But three two is, is encourage newer types of business. So, that would be, if I'm an artist, that's a newer type business, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. I agree. Well, I kinda think three four and three eight probably redundant.
Yeah.
If you.
Explore, promote.
Yeah.
Three four and three eight, yeah.
And three. So, which one do you wanna strike?
Three eight.
Three eight's gone.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think that is probably okay, 'cause it does sound like three eight's covered already under three four.
Three eleven.
Here we are entertaining, including kids.
I think that's already kinda, that's kinda redundant to the other ones.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I agree.
Do we?
I mean, did they do this to make it look like they did a lot of work?
I don't know, village councils, I think it's one of those.
Well, to be honest, I, I think a lot of the stuff, there was stuff that was in the last master plan and a lot of that just was carried forward and they just added a bunch of.
We don't.
Right, but it's like, to put in redundant things is another story.
But they certainly could have gone through it and made some recommendations or some suggestions on how we could.
Actually, they could have made two nice bullets and be done with it.
Yeah, they, they wanna look like they.
They, they wanted a half a page and they got it. So, can we strike three point one two as well?
Yes.
I think so. Because was it in fill development?
In fill development, isn't that bringing new businesses in?
Yeah.
And we're encouraging, but.
But yeah, it's more.
I agree we're striking.
Strike three twelve.
Everybody?
Congratulate.
Okay. And we have pitched.
So, we struck three eleven and three twelve then?
Yes. So, we struck three ten, three eight, three eight, three ten, three eleven, three twelve.
Yeah, and took out including children and.
Yes. Not that we don't want the children, I wanna make sure it's not, you know, misinterpreted.
It's on, it's on tape that you guys said you wanna strike children.
Yeah.
We're onto circulation improvement.
Eighty-eight's good. I, I mean, I, I get it, but it's gonna be our streets, I mean, when you say a pathway system, we're already, everybody's using the streets now. What alternative other than the streets do we have to, to create that pathway system?
I think we talked about changing that word to walkway.
Yes.
So that we continue to improve sidewalks and stuff.
And I think four point four, they had intended to strike that.
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Four point four was supposed to have been struck. Pick your list. And I think we said four three, it was, instead of improve, that was investigate.
Well, this was, this is project, we.
This is circulation improvement.
Project is supposed to be something concrete that you can do, it's like an action.
Yeah, but I, it's M dot's road.
Yeah.
And I can, I can investigate and I can raise the. Just said investigate over improve.
Well, it's something that Taylor just said, if it's M dot.
Did we do that with the last one?
We did, it's like, well, 'cause I, I.
I remember you brought it up.
You know, we, we can't control Granger and Oakwood roads. It's like, so to put our efforts and, and our tax dollars into having.
Right, we mentioned about Bill having to spend time.
Well, actually, it does show village manager and M dot as the, the lead on those, so.
Right.
That would be the lead appropriately on that.
Bill brought, brought up a good point the last time, saying that, you know, then he has to invest a certain amount of hours to, to get with M dot and, well, I mean, how many times did you get switched on phone calls and everything with the DNR and all that? Where you're trying to find out about. Seven times?
Was it seven?
Seven, I think it was.
I mean, it's like, we don't, we, I mean, it's, and I know that, you know, we're coming up on, that's, the defining, the Oakwood and Granger are the defining roads, but we don't control those roads.
Yeah, but that's why M dot is showing us the.
When does the township come in?
Lead on that.
Right.
When does the township come in?
I'm just saying, our village manager shouldn't be putting his on this, 'cause our taxpayers are competing.
Well, we could, we could, the village manager maybe instead of being the dark ring, which is project lead, maybe should, uh,
Just a contributor?
Be a key contributor maybe instead.
Yeah, it's certainly not a lead.
I don't even agree with the priority. I don't think we, it should be within one year.
I don't either.
To round about, and whatever, that's just, the priority is wrong here.
We could do that as a C.
We have a lot of other roads we need to.
Do we agree that priority should be C?
Yes.
C.
And then, one to three, or three to five? Three plus it is.
Yeah.
Three plus.
Okay.
And.
And we don't got change to improve to investigate.
Well, I, I think M dot needs to improve it. They're the lead, that, that's appropriate.
Yeah, but I can't give them a job assignment, all we can do is investigate.
No, but you could be a key contributor and say, look, M dot, we want you to improve this. That's all we can do. If they don't, you know, they don't have to follow a master plan, they probably won't.
Yeah, they don't, they've got a lot of.
But this is, this is our, this is saying, hey, this is what we would like to see happen. M dot's the lead on it, so that the only thing we can do is try to push them.
And I would rather push them on roads that we can actually, you know, stuff that we can actually get somewhere.
So, we're on four five?
Four four.
Well, I thought we deleted that.
Yeah, we deleted that.
All right, thank you.
Did we, um, Dan, did you have a question on four two?
I have a cross.
Yeah, so, did we talk about this? Four two?
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't understand how you, you could completely separate from the road and next to sidewalk.
Walkway, which should be a walkway, you know, but.
So, no.
Well, they're talking about the bicycle paths being completely separate from the sidewalk, next to, or next to sidewalks and separate from the road. I don't even know where we could really do that.
No.
I think that's why I crossed it off.
I agree.
I don't, it's not.
It's not feasible.
Great.
We're striking four two.
We're striking four two.
Here we go. All right. So, we struck four two and four four so far.
All right.
Okay, and we're on four five.
One does, isn't that ongoing?
It should be ongoing.
Because we've.
Yeah, yeah.
We know the sidewalks are.
Oh, we changed the sidewalks to walkway?
Yes.
Well, in this case, it's not specifically about such.
Oh, sorry.
They're fine, it's fine, yeah.
All right.
Construct sidewalks on all village streets.
And again, on all village streets.
Isn't that dumb, or no, that's construction, new, new sidewalk you're talking about.
Right, wait, wait, we gotta.
On all?
Yeah, because, because, uh, Granger, I mean, are we doing, are we gonna do sidewalks on Granger so that would be all? Because that's village.
Well, we're gonna do sidewalks throughout Crescent Hill.
But that's not a county road.
But that's within the village, it's village streets. Crescent Hill subdivision is, is village streets.
Right, right, but Granger is not a village street. Oakwood, and I know.
What I'm saying is that, is that, is that a goal, is to put sidewalks on all village roads, including like?
No.
No.
Crescent Hill and all that stuff.
How about Granger and then Oakwood?
You thought what?
Granger was right after Oakwood. I don't know, but let's do Oakwood first.
There's a, a great desire.
Yeah.
We go Oakwood first.
And Granger too. They need a sidewalk on Granger.
Didn't they do a vote on Granger a long time ago, or they voted no or something like that?
There was a survey that we got.
Okay.
'Cause of all the trees that.
So, we're, we're on. Uh, four point six construct sidewalks, I think were applicable, or we can't do them on all village streets.
Yeah.
I think where.
It can't be all. So, it should be where applicable, right? Or where feasible.
Yeah, 'cause we should have it in there just in case a grant comes available.
Yeah, so, I would say, uh, sidewalks where feasible.
Where case of grant becomes available, well, that would be.
Well, I don't think we can, I don't think we can list them case of grant becomes available.
No, 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 no.
He didn't suggest that, he was just making that as a comment.
I would say where feasible within the village.
Okay, I got, we struck sidewalks on all village street where feasible.
Yeah.
Okay. Right?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
And I think four eight and four seven are redundant.
Yeah.
Which ones, four eight and what?
Four seven.
The redundant of four five?
No, I think four eight is redundant to four five.
Yeah, that's a.
It is, it is.
We could just say, we could just add in four five such as sidewalks and roads.
There you go.
And then eliminate four, seven and eight?
No, just eliminate four eight.
Why not four seven?
Yeah.
It actually says ensure road improvements are designed consistent with our.
Such as sidewalks and roads.
So. So, we deleted four eight, are we deleting four seven or are we changing?
Yes, and we're gonna insert.
Why are we deleting four seven? 'Cause it just says ensure that, it says, it's not saying to, it's not talking about improving or replacing. It's talking about ensuring that they're consistent with the recommendations of this plan.
But what about four five though? Replace aging infrastructure as necessary, such as sidewalks and will add and roads. That's the same, I, I see that as the same.
Same thing, yeah.
Yeah, but four seven say, is talking more about how you are.
It's just saying ensure that road improvement, right?
Yeah, they're saying ensure that road improvements are designed consistent with recommendations of plan. In other words, don't just fix the roads.
But we're not gonna replace.
But when you go and replace or infrastructure, make it consistent with the plan.
Well, we would, when we replace aging infrastructure, when that came to, we would make sure that's there.
We have a suggestion to eliminate four point seven. Who's in favor? It's a I.
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 All right, we're eliminating. Four nine. This is the roundabout, isn't it?
Yeah.
Axios management technique should do.
That's, uh, that's putting in.
Ranger Hall and Mill, the roundabouts at fifteen and Granger, Granger.
That would be stuff like, uh, maybe, you know how we've put in, uh, a service drive down at, or not a service drive, but you know where the car dealership is?
Yep.
We told them that when they redid that.
Turn lane.
Yeah, yeah.
Thing there that they, that they had to leave that open.
We had to leave it so you could do a service drive at one point that would be parallel to fifteen, so people could get off and then get to all the businesses along one service drive as opposed to having multiple drives.
Kind of like book burning damage, you can just get off on the old road or whatever.
So, if Barry does his, maybe at that point in time, you do a service drive there and so you got one.
So, you only have a couple of drives to access the.
The service drive is supposed to.
Aren't we already doing that now or no?
No, not really.
Okay, all right.
We could keep that, isn't it?
Alright, alright. Are we on four, ten?
Four, ten.
Yeah, I think four, ten we should leave on.
We're in the home stretch. Well, we're talking about the sidewalks and what we're saying, I don't know if we want to specifically say Oakwood or Granger only because we have it up here, uh, where's, where feasible.
Well, I think that those were two specific points where we have identified that there's safety concerns and issues with people walking along the side of the road because of the traffic. So this is like particular areas where we want to have, uh, considerations.
You could say such as, you know, such as Oakwood or, but right now Granger's not on, on any target of this, right? So Oakwood is, so why don't we just strike in Granger Road?
Okay.
Keep Oakwood active maybe.
We, there was a lot of, there, I, I do know, there has been a lot of concerns about safety with people walking alongside of Granger Road, especially kids going to school and stuff, you know? So I think that Granger Road definitely was, um, brought up as a concern from a lot of residents and some of the input process. And I know it's been talked about in the past that Granger Road really could use a sidewalk for safety reasons.
Maybe we could just keep it both that, that, they're both important and there are low light areas.
So change especially from just such as Oakland and Granger?
I, I would just leave it as.
We're not, we're not being consistent with when we said where feasible then, but.
Or just can reach.
Down, the downtown.
Downtown, period?
Period.
Yeah.
Straight.
But see, I, I just wanna, and I agree with the trustee Botsu saying Oak, the Oakwood sidewalk needs to be on the radar and I don't want him to cite it.
Yeah, and I think, I think Granger should be on the radar too, because I know that there's been a lot of safety concerns expressed about people, kids walking along there.
Well, I know there was a survey done. No, the residents did not want it.
But.
I know with that survey, and I know things change and people change. I get that.
But li- listen, I, I don't disagree with the Granger Road one, but we're gonna be lucky to get it done within the one to five years within this first master plan. So let's, let's.
Oakwood, we have to have happen.
Let's zone in on a, a achievable as opposed to just, you know, stacking the plate. I, I, I propose we omit end Granger roads until we get Oakwood done.
Yeah, okay.
Oakwood's the priority.
So I put can reach downtown. Well, who all is in favor of.
Such as Oakwood? I, I, I already struck out Granger myself, you know, but, you know, just because.
Have you favor striking Granger?
I, I would be too, because Oakwood has been talked about for a long time.
Sounds like there's at least four who are in favor of that, so.
So leave any especially or?
From Oakwood?
I would say for, uh, to reach down, reach the downtown off Oakwood. I would, right, so.
To make it specific.
Take out spending, can reach the downtown from Oakwood.
Or from Oakwood, that's fine.
Yeah, just take out especially.
Yep, good, yep.
Okay.
Good.
Your point's good.
It's just that Oakwood's one that we, if anything's gonna happen.
Yeah, we'll be lucky in the five years, you know.
Alright.
Moving along, we're going to page eighty-nine.
Like I said, the consensus is to take it out, but it's okay.
I hate to get too sidetracked, but where do we stand on our other sidewalks? You know, did we, we get the other quote now that we?
No, I've got, I am, to be honest with you, I've been up to my neck in trash and other stuff trying to get.
Okay, because we, we lost the window the last time and I know the price.
Well, the bids came back and so we said we weren't gonna do it at sixty-nine thousand. We said we weren't gonna do it at sixty-nine thousand.
The sidewalk issue, you know.
So what, what it was is I'm trying to get, I'll try to get local bids to see how much I can get done.
Right, because wasn't it the way it was written up also? The specs, all the. All the specs and everything? Do we have?
Oh, yeah, but you gotta have, you gotta have specs. You can't have.
Well, it won't be that thick.
Okay.
But have you, you haven't, you haven't put that out yet?
No.
Okay.
Because we're gonna miss the window again. You know, I'm just concerned, so.
But real quick, um, even, you know, with the sidewalks, Oakwood or Granger, is there any, when, when we get to that point, that, that the township can help kick in?
Yeah.
I mean, because bottom line is, the township's gonna benefit from that as well.
Well, you know, the thing is, is that you think about Granger and you think about the village and then where the schools are, that also could tie into like, uh, safe routes to schools and things like that. So if we had that in there, it would potentially.
Safe routes to schools, you need to do both sides of the road.
Oh.
So if you do, if you do.
That's probably gonna happen right there.
Like, if you do, to get safe, safe roads to, to school grant. So if you do that, you'd have to include the township, would have to.
Both sides. Yeah, with that, I, I know on Granger, that big pond right there, I don't know unless they can come through and, I don't know, but anyway.
Alright, so we'll be on page eighty-nine?
Yes.
Yes.
First one, four eleven, we should change trails to walkways to be consistent.
It's just, and proposed recreation areas, I mean, are we talking the wildlife preservation park there? Where is that? Proposed recreation area?
Yeah, where's that?
Such as Narin Park and other park featured area.
So that is, yeah.
Along the creek.
Again, Dan, it just says two. It doesn't say within. It just says two. And it doesn't mention that it says along the bridge there.
Yeah. Just in, in proposal.
It didn't specify. Yeah, I think we'll take.
Okay. Two.
Connect businesses with bicycle paths.
Oh, boy, here we are with the bicycle paths again. Where are we gonna put them? I mean, you're killing this thing. That's the same as four, one in my mind.
Well, you know, could we just add, because it's specific to recreation areas, can we just say recreation area?
I think that, that's redundant for one. I would agree with that.
Straight.
Strike four, one?
No, strike four, two, one.
Four, top fall.
Cause.
I, I don't even know how you make that a project, to be honest.
Four, three, I would suggest it's ongoing. We, we have track, traffic calming devices already, so we don't need to pursue. We just need to, ongoing.
Ongoing?
Ongoing.
Strike one, P.
Pursue? Should we change it to, um, um.
Continue on.
No, pursue's fine.
I think pursue is fine.
Pursue's fine.
Maintain traffic calming?
I think pursue is fine, because there's, some of those don't have traffic calming.
Some more.
You gotta do more.
Promote.
What traffic calming is or a James and Mill.
Promote calming is a management technique.
James and Mill?
I know.
We need that big speedboat.
I thought there was one right outside.
I say just put a stop sign.
Yes, but we're also talking James and Mill because that's a real bad spot up there.
Yeah.
So they're still going down Mill even past yours?
Can we change pursue to promote, promote? Or are we just leaving?
We're leaving pursue, I guess.
Leave pursue?
Alright.
Alright.
Now I got a question on four, fourteen. To, to me, develop consistent streetscape improvements?
That does seem redundant to something else.
I was gonna say, that sounds more like it should have been in the previous section under the downtown development stuff. I mean, what's a streetscape improvement?
Besides, isn't it? Or is it?
Oh, no, you tell us, Larry.
That's why I was thinking, that's why I was thinking it maybe should be in the previous section and not this one.
Well, do you think we should just eliminate it because it?
Consistent.
Nobody, there's nothing there.
Those are like flower beds and stuff like that as well.
Oh, so yeah, that should be in civic improvements.
So we'll just, we can move it?
Move that.
Is there one already there that says that? And landscape designs plus gazebo for heritage, that was specific to, um, heritage.
That is whack.
And additional landscaping, streetscape along sidewalk parks and government buildings, brick favors.
That's, that should cover it.
So that should be here.
That should cover that, so that's a redundant.
Strike four, fourteen, strike.
And four, fifteen's redundant.
Well, what's trailhead? What are we talking trail? Landscaped trailhead? Bicycle in connection, natural looking hard, packed dirt or gravel surface area, surface in the natural area. That, that, is that trailhead, is that part of the proposed, uh, rail, uh, railroad trail that they were talking about, Larry?
Because we haven't used trailhead.
Yeah, I know.
Other than.
Yeah, I think that might have been a hangover and stuff there.
Strike, strike, strike four point one five.
Then we've already said that that's, next one's not feasible, correct? Four, sixteen?
Correct.
Yep.
Here we're talking about traffic. So here we're gonna pursue, but create is the same.
That's the same thing.
Yeah.
It's redundant. Seventeen's gone.
It's like they included everyone, everybody.
Bicycle pass.
The planning commission, yeah.
Four, eighteen, that's gone.
Yeah, I think we.
Let's throw it all in there.
And four, nineteen.
And four, nineteen, yeah, because there ain't no open.
So four, fourteen through four, nineteen are all done.
Okay.
See, and a lot of that's because of, uh, more information that came out from when this was reviewed in our month session together.
Yep.
Such as the fact that there is no open.
Closing a hard stuff now?
Yes.
Well, well, let me ask you this. These two are, these two, unless you guys wanna read them at home, these two are just kinda informational material. They're things that McKenna gave us for economic development tools. They're more information stuff versus.
Did, did, Larry, did the planning commission do any changes?
Yeah, they corrected some grammar.
Yeah, and I see something in the first sentence. Tax and finance, TIF, is a funding method that authorizes bodies may use for public purposes. What?
What?
Something's wrong with the way you get when you read it.
Authorized bodies may use.
Yeah, it's not grammatical, correct?
You sure?
Is a funding method that authorized.
Authorizes.
May use for public purpose.
An authorized bodies. You're an authorized body, the D A.
No, that's correct.
Okay, I guess that is okay.
It just, yeah.
It just, it just.
When you read it, I mean, it's a meat off too.
Maybe we can change it to be.
No, it's correct.
No, no, but I mean, it's like, I understand now we have to read it.
You could say approved bodies or you could put, or government entities or, I mean, it says authorized bodies. I mean, you're talking about really a.
Government doesn't, right? Or authorized government.
That voice, McKenna.
Alright, well.
You don't wanna just keep like answers or? Would anybody else stumble over it if they read it like we just, they literally just read it?
It's Larry's fault. It was the way he read it.
It's my fault. It's my fault.
Well, I.
I guess it makes sense.
I mean, that's, you've read this several times.
I've read through the next.
So are you guys ready to send it back then? You don't need to go through the appendixes, right? Or? We'll look at what happens right now or not.
Right, once it, once it comes back, any of.
I mean, because the appendixes are basically.
So, can I ask you, uh, how are you gonna propose McKenna to?
Are they gonna strike and then put, so that we can see the edited version before?
No. We are gonna, we told them to send us an editable version of this so that Liz and I can do that, strike it.
Are they charging us more money to edit that? Is that why you're doing this?
I was gonna say.
Because every time you send it back to do something, if it's not their mistake, like, you know, if we start saying, oh, I, I don't like this and I like this, then they charge us for that.
Well, they're grammatical and they're proper.
Yeah. Do we get to charge them?
They're proper nouns.
That was kinda like why, that was kinda why I was saying, you know, it's just a, changing a word.
They have, they have.
Let's not change.
Yeah, the, the hard part, the hardest part is changing, believe it or not, the hardest part of what we got is anything that we change on, like the maps and stuff like that, all goes to their graphic department, you know? And so they have.
The sad part is they didn't get that right though.
Well, and some of it we didn't get right. I mean, there's stuff like the infamous Edward Street.
Oh, that was.
Is it Edward or Edwards?
That's been wrong on the master plan forever.
It's been wrong on the master plan forever. We caught it this time.
I guess, you know, the amount of money that we spent and for them to be, um, and I understand, you know, their, their time, you know, doing it, but when they can't have. When, they, they should be able to see based on their experience when something's redundant, especially, I mean, I know that when you flip back pages of, you know, you kinda forget because everything kinda gets mumbled. But when you are in the same section and one is a redundancy of the one just above it, to me, there's no, there's no reason for that.
Well, planning commission gave it to them, right? You guys gave them to them to put in there?
Well, they put a lot of that in that came in from, that was generated from the public input and collected that together and.
So you didn't give them any direction as to what to leave in and take out?
But they were the ones, the shareholders. We did. We went through some of this already and we also had that joint meeting which we sat down and we went through all these in the joint meeting too. So they were all in there at that point too. And then, you know, we're still.
That's right.
It, it's just, there was, there's, it, it's one of those situations where when you have so much stuff to review and when we get there and we have like a two to three hours meeting with them. And we're finding so many mistakes, we focus on all the most important things, we try to capture all that stuff. But there's a lot of stuff that obviously we did not catch everything because there's just not enough time to.
There's, there's like a bunch of stuff that literally has been wrong through two cycles of the master plan that were never.
Because people lack detail.
Now, before you adjourn. We had something we told them we need to change this.
Before we do have to adjourn, before we adjourn, does anybody have any other guidance for Bill before he takes this and Liz is gonna take it?
Are we, we good with what we propose? I mean.
You need a, you need a motion to refer it. What's this gonna ask? I said, you got two things you can do. Number one, you can either, that's why I asked a question, did you guys want to review the appendixes or are you going to accept them as, because their charts, data that they collected? You know, my opinion would be no.
I don't, I don't know that we need everything that's in there. Just to throw it in there because that's what was collected as part of the process doesn't mean we have to put it in.
So we can ask that question.
That's my, my thought. All that is, is, all that is, is homework stuff that, that generated the, the master.
And that's assuming, and, and again, I'm just saying, that's assuming that this is actually came, that this was, is real truthful information.
Well, again, it's, it's data that was collected that generated the meat, so why do you have to put that in there? And that's what I would question if we're gonna review it.
Okay.
And that, that's up to the council. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, the planning commission did review and we did actually ask them to make some changes to the way some of the stuff was presented in that section. And they did make those changes for us. Um, I think that it's, it's not bad reference material to have, so when, when us, you know, like down the road citizens are looking at this, they don't just see just the plan. They can also see the input that it was derived from, so they can say, oh, okay, this is why this is there, that's why that's there.
We struck things out that are in that, in those charts.
So it's really not valid when one person.
Illegal charts, someone could say, well, it's in the charts, how come it's not in the plan?
Especially when one.
So my point is it just creates.
The answer to that is simply, well.
I think it creates confusion. I don't think we need to put that in there.
I, I think it's, I think for the sake of having openness and transparency to the public, I think we should include it. Why, why do we wanna hide what the public was? Is there a reason to hide what it was?
I think we'll always be available without having them do it and charging us even more money.
Well, the appendix, if we're not changing it, it's just, there's no change that. It's the master plan itself. We can still include the appendix in the final revision. That shouldn't be any extra cost since it's already done, right?
Well, let me ask, I'll ask them the question if there's, if there's a requirement to, to, uh, include the appendix.
Okay, so if the appendix is there to, for someone to go in and reference and then go back into the master plan and find it, then we need to review it. If it's just in there for, okay, this is what we did and, and, and that's a different story, but if it's reference material to go back into the master plan, then we need to review it. That's my opinion. Otherwise, there could be mistakes.
Well, um, just looking at, you know, the appendix A where it says, um, the, uh, improving pedestrian connectivity throughout the village and linking the village to regional points of interest such as the Holly and Ortonville Recreation Area.
There's, there's.
And the other, the trail number should be high priority. That's not necessarily what we're saying and without, and without us.
Where, where's, what page are you on?
I just kept, it doesn't have a page. It's appendix A. I just went through like it.
That's just one, that's just one spot check, right?
Right, that's just, I don't look at the trail heads. I mean, the other things are just adjustments and stuff.
I think we need to review it. I think there's things in there that need to be omitted.
Well, let me, um.
Example in a minute, in a matter of seconds, we've identified something.
I can ask, and I can ask them if there is a reason to include it. Unless, do you guys want?
Well, that's, I think the, the appendix stuff, but some of the, the verbiage that's written in there, for me, for me personally, of what I just read from A, I don't feel comfortable without going through the rest of it. I don't know what everybody else feels, but that, that's just me.
I'll confirm to that because.
Yeah, it'd probably be appropriate.
I mean, we did this, it's good so far.
Because they're talking about that, that trail connectivity.
See, we need to check our schedule for the next meeting.
Otherwise, we're not consistent with what we said here and then our appendix is saying something else.
And as I think, uh, somebody said last time, I think I would, I would be in favor of making, should we do a good review of that and take a little more time to do a good review rather than try to rush things. So I'm okay with taking more time.
Everybody got their calendars out?
Yes.
No, I don't.
So I'm not available next week.
Not available Wednesday.
Right, I wanna be.
But, I mean, if you guys wanna keep this rolling, you know what I mean? I would be offended.
Well, why don't, I mean, for, why don't we keep this rolling? Is there, and I know, Dan, you're gonna be out, but is there anything that we could get this week? I know Wednesday we're already busy.
What's going on the fifteenth, Monday?
Yeah. Well, me, I'll be out of town next week, but, you know.
My Mondays are all clear.
Yeah, he's clearing Mondays.
Oh, yeah, you're gone next week too, right? So are you proposing maybe something Thursday or something like that?
The following Monday is the commission, is council.
Yeah, council.
Let's do the twenty ninth.
What day is?
No, no, what about, if we're looking at the week of the twenty second, twenty second is council meeting, but can we do something later on in the week, you know?
Well, okay, so getting anywhere, so, and I'm just throwing it out there, is there, there's nothing available to do this week? Because we, we don't, Dan's not gonna be available.
Are you gone all the rest of the week?
Yeah.
Okay.
But then you leave for vacation for next week. And then if we're looking at that to the twenty ninth.
Well, we still have a call. If Tanya can make it.
Right, right, we still, I'm just trying.
So I mean, we could do something this week if we could fit in with Tony's.
All right, so pick a date.
Otherwise, we're not looking at till the twenty ninth.
Or the twenty third.
And when is this due back?
Why not do Tuesday, twenty third?
Booked this week, I'm.
Oh, you're, okay.
I mean, I've got other commitments.
Next week, Tuesday and Thursday, I'm booked on those days.
You don't necessarily need me, I mean, to go through the appendixes, I mean, what is this here, but.
Yeah.
What about Tuesday the twenty third? It's the day after our Monday meeting.
That'd be okay, I mean.
Okay.
All right, why don't we, why don't we set that at six thirty?
Oh, well, let's see, is there some, what was, why am I thinking, what was that rope webinar?
That, um.
Oh, not one of them, that seminar.
Let me find out for you.
Twenty third?
It's one of the single.
I will ask, I will ask them.
I think that might be the twenty third, is that?
I will ask McKenna about the appendixes too, that if it's.
I think the twenty third might be that row seminar, and I think I, I signed up to go to that.
You are correct, at seven P M. on Tuesday the twenty third.
So I can't be on the twenty third then.
Well, I mean, is there anything?
I could probably do the twenty fifth, which is Thursday, that week.
Your guys' choice.
Thursday, twenty fifth?
Six thirty.
Okay, six thirty.
Do we want a motion to schedule a meeting on?
Make a motion to schedule a next meeting Thursday, the twenty fifth of April, at six thirty in the village office.
Support. Oh, did you support it?
I think that Pat did. Well, I don't know, I, I would say I.
I think you.
I know that one, it comes out, it comes out that far.
I think, I think I heard you say.
So our next, well, we have meeting on Wednesday. Monday, the twenty second.
And the twenty fifth. Twenty four.
And then, okay. And so is it our hope that we will be completed with it, the twenty fifth, and we'll be able to get it, how much, it will go back to McKenna?
No.
No, go to this.
Oh, it's gonna go to, it's gonna go to, okay, so it's gonna go there, and then, and then when, what's the next timeline after that? How long?
The planning commission then, if they adopt all your changes.
Be the first Tuesday in May.
They have adopted all your changes, they would send it, they would say, yep, okay, the changes are good.
Do we have time to do that?
They make a, they make a resolution.
Planning commission agrees with all changes or has some.
For final, final approval to the village council.
Because if we, if we're not meeting till the twenty fifth, and then you guys have to take care of your stuff and then get it to planning commission in time for their May fifth meeting or fourth, okay, just.
Right, we're gonna take care of the stuff prior to the next meeting.
You're going as you're going along.
Up to.
Okay.
They owe us the thing, so.
Okay.
Liz and I will get together.
Because I, I'm out until, I'll be out the first part of May until the thirteenth, so.
Well, that'll give you something to work on while you're on vacation.
So if you're looking for my input.
I don't have anything else.
I don't have any grants to make.
No.
I think, I think you could make a motion to.
Am I taking cell phone?
Adjourn, motion to adjourn pretty quick.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.